Welcome, everybody. It is Tuesday, April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is six thirty-one. We are at the middle of high school library. We are in a virtual meeting room for Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of U.S. law, General Law C thirty-eight second twenty. This meeting will take place virtually Zoom for those committee members and attendees choosing to enter. The rest of the general public is invited to attend in person. I am going to be all just meeting for order pursuant to mask down the law, C thirty, A section twenty. I am hereby informing all attendees that video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. Next up, we will have the flag of the reason led by. We just have, we just have Amaya.
Right out here. I'm glad to lead this to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, mission statement of we public schools are being created as the opportunities to develop the social, civil, and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world.
President.
Ms. Larmen.
Here.
Ms. Strickler.
Yeah.
All right, first up, we have.
I was trying to get the mission statements.
Next up, we have the FY twenty-four budget presentation.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you very much, and I appreciate those of you who are in attendance tonight, both in person and virtually. We've got, I don't need to repeat the mission statement as Mrs. Larmen just did that. But I want to bring to your attention very quickly a problem, and it's not an unsolvable one, unmanageable one, but one that's real and that we need to keep mind, be mindful of as we move forward, both in FY twenty-four, FY twenty-five, and beyond. And that is that we only have one more year of ESSER funding to take us through September of two thousand and twenty-four. We have four members who are assigned to those ESSER funds. They're listed there for you. We've got two interventionists, one district-wide school adjustment counselor, and an elementary counselor. You'll recall that we had a sort of a back and forth last year about trying to bring in a curriculum coordinator. In the end, that extra eighty to a hundred thousand dollars was going to put us in a difficult spot for the budget, and so we reverted to applying that to an elementary counselor. We needed to do the same thing again this year. I'll let you know that now. We'll address that further in just a moment. Here are the things that are driving our budget for FY twenty-four. Specifically, those things include negotiated raises, two and a half percent over the next couple of years, high-quality instructional materials. You know, we invested in mathematics material. We're also going to be investing in English language arts materials, and then there's the implementation of those materials once they're purchased, including the professional development associated therewith. We continue to apply for and receive in a limited basis grants to assist us with that. Social emotional learning. So again, ESSER is paying for an additional school adjustment counselor. I'm suggesting to the committee, we need to look forward and continue to keep that position. The importance of the district-wide component to allow for both the continuity and familiarity moving from the elementary school to the middle and high school is very important for our students. And then technology, we know that as part of our strategic improvement plan, technology is part of that. We need to be mindful of the costs associated with upgrading, replacing, and maintaining all of the technology that are in our buildings. Our budget priorities are driven by that strategic improvement plan that was passed a little over a year ago, supported by this school committee. Everything that is in our budget for FY twenty-four is supported by those four priorities. We have capital needs. We have a truck that failed this year. We were very appreciative of the fact that the town of Lee supported us and was give us a replacement. To give us a replacement. Yeah, I guess it is replacement truck for a period of time based on feedback I've received from Jordan Meyer, our facilities director. He says that if we had to rely on that vehicle one more year, would not make it another year. So we do need to look at that. The HVAC controls, you know, that we applied for and received a hundred thousand dollar grant to help us with the expenses to upgrade the systems that are related to the HVAC. So part capital, part school choice is the plan there. And then network switches. This is the backbone of our learning these days, and so we need to make sure that that our network switches, that our wireless access points, that all of those things related to technology are up, running, and operating at their highest efficiencies. If those fail, we would be crippled. So that is, it needs to be a priority for the district. We do have access to E-rate up to seventy-six thousand dollars. We're hoping that the town will pick in the balance of a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars to make that upgrade. And the, the reality is there, that's not an upgrade that can be done during the school year, so that's, that's an upgrade that we need to happen over the summer. In the budget, we'll also see that we have previously unfunded and underfunded positions that have been brought to levels that are appropriate. So some of those things include some of our athletic coaches were previously not funded. The athletic director and assistant athletic director, not funded. Substitute teachers and paraprofessionals significantly underfunded. And there were many stipended positions in Unit A, that's the teacher's contract, that also had no assigned budget line. Well, there was a line there, but it had zero dollars assigned to it. I've, I've included those dollar amounts to make it real. So this budget that we're looking at is an accurate depiction of where the, where the school district stands for FY twenty-four with all of the necessary expenses to operate a highly effective school district. We also have special education implications to consider. These are just some data for you to look at relative to special education in the Lee Public Schools. Six hundred and seventy-three students, a hundred and twenty-three of them with IEPs. It's eighteen point two percent. You'll see it slightly under the state average, but in a district our size, that number is significant. We have a number of students with high needs requiring one-to-one service. We've got a number of paraprofessionals that are needed. We're going to need more of those, and we have out-of-district students in total of seven, such five point seven of those percent on IEPs who who go out of district, and we know that there are, those are expensive programs to go, including one who attends a program for the visually impaired. Lots of money associated with that. The town, if it's the next, well, we'll get to it. How do we, how are we trying to address this? Part of it is with school choice, right? We, we survive by cannibalizing our neighbors, and our neighbors survive by cannibalizing us. Our objective is to try to bring in as many school choice students as we can, and while five thousand dollars is far less than the cost to educate the average student, which is about nineteen thousand dollars in Lee, five thousand dollars additional is better than zero dollars to help us offset that. So we've got currently a hundred and fifty school choice students. We have opened up a hundred and thirty-seven seats for next year, and we are targeting sixty students per grade. You remember, we had a very animated discussion about that not too long ago, and I'm glad that we had that discussion so that people realize what the stresses are on large class sizes, but what the realities are of bringing our students in and having the school choice funds to be able to rely on. Some statewide numbers, and I apologize, partial, part of that's blocked on top. I'll see if I can move this over so you can see that. Student Opportunity Act proposed to be fully funded in the governor's FY twenty-four budget. Do you know what that means? They're giving us thirty dollars, three zero dollars per student, which adds up to about eighteen thousand dollars. That doesn't change the world in which we live. That does not change in any way, shape, or form how we operate as a district. I can tell you that, and I'll share this with you more during my superintendent's report during regular school committee meeting. I met with legislators from Berkshire County along with my superintendent roundtable earlier this week and we, yesterday, and we, and we advocated very strongly that the state needs to come up with a a different system of assigning funds and values to, to these sources when they decide to come up with them, because thirty dollars per student doesn't change your life more. Our wealthier towns, Mount Bralock, for instance, is receiving twice the amount of money per student that we are under the Student Opportunity Act. School choice receipts, we're bringing in nearly a million dollars. That's just what we're bringing in. We're also putting out a number of the sending tuition, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, so there's a three hundred thousand dollar or so value that we're netting into the positive. Chapter seventy-eight, two point one million. And those, those figures are all coming to us through the cherry sheets that were distributed back in the third week of February. The Special Education Reserve Fund. Last year, the town, bless you, the town agreed to support creating a Special Education Reserve Fund and depositing a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars into that account. The town is again supporting, adding another hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to that account. If we don't need to touch it this year, and there is a, there is a possibility that we will not need to touch that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars this year, puts us in an excellent position, assuming, assuming that that warrant article is approved at town meeting to have a quarter million dollars in Special Education Reserve that will help us in the event that those out-of-district student numbers potentially increase. The final slide for you is just sort of an overview of where we are. The overall budget increase from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four is four point seven five percent. You'll see that some of those numbers in the percent changed column look large, but the, I think that the, the notes there are important. Your school committee line is going up by six thousand dollars, which isn't a ton of money, but it's seventy-five percent of that line. That's to support the Comfort Dogs. Something that I'll talk about again in my report later is the fundraising that we have done for Comfort Dogs has been very successful to this point this year. The, the event that we held at the locker room raised more than six hundred dollars in one day. And together between donations that people have made, I think we've got about thirteen hundred dollars, nineteen hundred, excuse me, nineteen hundred dollars, so almost two thousand dollars in fundraising in the, in the last couple of months. So that's pretty, it's pretty fantastic. We'll have some more of that after Thursday when we receive the receipts from the Texas Roadhouse fundraiser that was conducted as well. The, the other line that really jumps out is other student activities. Again, that's where those lines that were previously underfunded or not funded at all were raised to their appropriate values. So I feel confident that the twelve million plus before offsets of eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in school choice, ninety thousand dollars in circuit breaker, and then five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in grant is a respectable and reasonable request of the town. My understanding at this point is that the town finance subcommittee supports our budget as proposed. And it will go, if, if provided it passes the school committee tonight, it will go before the annual town meeting on May eleventh. I spoke fast, but I tried to be efficient. I was doing breathing exercises earlier.
I'll make the motion.
This is just the presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
All right. Next is public comment. Residents of Lee are invited to address the committee regarding items in this evening's agenda. At this time, comments are limited to three minutes. Issues raised will only be referred to the administration or a subcommittee of the school committee.
We have one member in the community on Zoom and one member in the audience.
Is somebody else digging?
Just Kathy.
We have, we have three members, commit, community members.
So it looks like.
No hands raised.
All right. Well, that means we're going to take a brief recess. It is six forty-six, so we'll take a brief recess, and we will reconvene at six fifty-five for the rest of the meeting. So we'll see y'all at six fifty-five. Oh, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to recess to six fifty-five PM this weekend.
Any discussion? All those, oh, no, we have the roll call.
Mr. Robin?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes. Welcome back to the school committee meeting. We are going to keep moving with our agenda. And the next thing up on our agenda is the approval of the February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three school committee meeting minutes. So I'll entertain a motion.
I like the motion to approve, approval of the February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, we school committee meeting minutes.
Second. Any discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call for us?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Pennants?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Larmen?
abstaining.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes. All right. Next up, we have our reports. First up, we have our student representative reports with.
So social justice is having its past power of celebration drive, other taking in canned goods and all hygiene products. All donations will be going to the Elizabeth Springling Center and Piscine, which is an organization to help and support victims of domestic violence. LMHS Drama Team presented the Spring Festival, twenty-fifth annual program, families' bounty. And it was a very successful performance that's part of, and then the dates were March tenth to the twelfth. Spring sports are also starting up, baseball, softball, boys and girls channels in co-op with Lennox and with track team and boys across while we host a call for girls across. Middle school has held a skinny dinner, so it's a fundraiser for field trips. And also, we made a special event in the school on the March screen time challenge. This challenge has opened to, is open to all students and faculty and effort to reduce the amount of time people spend on their phones. Better this challenge, you would go to a table set outside of the tax area during the Friday, which we did. We show staff member your average daily screen time, and four weeks later, you'll go back and show the staff member your, like, your deduction of your screen time, and the top three people, I believe, from each race would get a word with the college. Duncan, Sarbus, they go. The junior class is also having a field trip to US and first and West YLC University. It's free to all juniors, including touring at both schools and lunches at US and first, which has the best college food in there. This field trip will happen Wednesday, Monday. The high school band is also going on a field trip to New York City. It's on, on April twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, which is a Friday and a Saturday. And as a part of the BCC's dual enrollment course offered at LMHS, the college physics class will be taking a day to visit and form a lot of that. April thirteenth, we're also having a career fair. It's a nice way to get students, student body to think about future after high school and will be found in the gym. And slots of local businesses will be.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Annie?
No question, but just a comment. That was very well done, and she's a former student of. Wonderful job.
Thank you so much, Annie.
Thank you.
Good luck on your exam. Thank you. All right, next up, Mike Rashard is going to give us another superintendent.
All right.
Show and tell.
Okay. Appreciate it. Maybe a little slower this time. Anyway, thank you very much, Ms. Larmen. I want to start with sharing with the committee that we recently received our graduation and dropout rates for the class of two thousand and twenty-two. And we are very proud to announce that we had a one hundred percent graduation rate last year and follow that up with a zero percent dropout rate. So we are, those, those two things seem to naturally correspond. But it's very, that's a very proud moment, and I appreciate all the work that the administration and the, and the staff do to support students, to keep them engaged. Some of the creative programming that's been put into place here in the district over the last number of years, including the POP program are some of the things that are allowing us to be successful and to engage in those numbers. So thank you to everyone. It's a team effort to get us to those numbers, so thank you. I mentioned earlier, we had a roundtable meeting with county legislators. We focused on four topics with those county legislators, rural aid. And that was discussed by Superintendent Regal Buto, Franzone, and Blake Davis. OSD in the fourteen percent increase associated with special education was presented by Superintendent Tillman. Chapter thirty-seven H and three quarters was supported by Superintendent Dean, and I talked about universal free meals. And we were joined by Representative John Barrett, Representative Tricia Farley Bouvier, Smitty Pigmatelli, and Senator Paul Mark, and, and they were very receptive to our message. We weren't the first to get in their ears about this. We won't be the last, but it was great that they, they had some very insightful questions. They challenged us about our thinking, about how we can further advocate for not only our districts here in the Berkshires, but across the Commonwealth. So I appreciate their time and efforts to meet with us. Quick thank you to the locker room and to the community for those who participated in the donate, dine, or dine to donate, excuse me, that supported our Comfort Dogs. Macy, Ollie, and Millie pictured there in the bottom left. Six hundred and twenty-nine dollars, ninety-one cents was raised on that day. So thank you to everybody who participated. And then a note about our battery, battery recycling program. The Lee Robo Wildcats and robotics team are, are trying to collect recyclable batteries so that they're not discarded and destroying the environment. Regular alkaline batteries are not acceptable. They must be one of those following here, but they're recyclable batteries or rechargeable, excuse me, rechargeable batteries. So if you do have any rechargeable batteries that you're no longer using, there is a bin at both LES and LMHS that you can, you're encouraged to drop those by. And I told you I'd be quick because I've, I've got to talk more budget a little later on.
Questions for Mike? All right. Moving on to our principal and directors report. First up, we have.
We started our ELA M-PAS this week, grade three and four, festered yesterday and today, grades five and six. We held our kindergarten workshop last month, and our kindergarten registration, April eleventh, we've got a good idea of what size class we should be receiving after that date. We welcomed Nick Woodard from Learning the Ropes, who did two assemblies for LES students with an inspiring message of three months of leaving and building. He's a professional jumper over, which is kind of cool, a former Olympian. We did an unbelievable job, and it was a front page spread and virtually people celebrated that Sunday. Our third quarter ended last Friday. The four credits go home this Friday. We held a Wildcat Cafe concert last week. There were several members of fifty-sixth grade chorus and bands performing songs of their choice in small groups. Also, our town show, too, inspired that, by the town show at the LMHS Art Tour. Work on the Playground is complete in that phase where they were adding wood chips and getting that whole area squared away. It's looking better than I've ever seen it look in twenty-two years I've been in this district. We're looking forward to the next phase. A walk to school tomorrow, which we're looking forward to as well. The Lego Robotics team, as Superintendent Rashard said, you know, they have a battery recycling program in both buildings. They also won an award for best research project at these Lego competitions. Last month, we held our community reading day, welcoming several community members, volunteers who write in every LES classroom. Summer programming is underway. Again, we're going to be funding that through the ASOS grant, which is a private grant of about twenty-four thousand dollars. And Flying Cloud is going to be offering a real science school again in grades four through six, and we know information coming out next month about that. And Flying Cloud will also be here next week during residency in fourth grade, which is also going to be paid for by National Field Council. A lot of good things.
All right, moving on to Greg Gregenti for Minimum One High School.
As Tim mentioned, it's M-PAS season. So far, we competed with grade ten ELA last week. And next week, we have ELA for grade seven and eight. Math files in May for all of those grades, and then eighth grade science, and then you have your ninth biology. As Annie mentioned, we had a truly exceptional performance at the twenty-fifth annual funding conference. I, I just, I have to say again, it was a really, really incredible performance. And a lot of congratulations in due order to the, to the past, the true only directors of fashion. This is, again, really exceptional. The GSA student group conducted the annual ALI by March thirteenth through seventeen. The week was cut short by the two snow days a little bit. On Thursday, the sixteenth, they have their day assignment. On March twenty-first and twenty-second, we kicked off course selection for the next school year. We had in-school assemblies for grade seven to eleven. We also had the sixth grade family information night for those students. We invited Otis, parents and families who were interested in perhaps coming here next year to that. And we also held a virtual question and answer session to follow up with the parents who had questions. That last one, we renewed on, and about this year. Course selection forms are due next week, and then we spend May, where we go with the schedule, with the hope of giving schedules in students' hands. Annie mentioned about the spaghetti dinner that the middle school held with a fundraiser. I wanted to highlight that again because it was the first one. We've had since two thousand and nineteen. And we were a little, you know, concerned with the crowd, but we did have over a hundred and eighty meals served. Again, all the proceeds are most important as field trips and we're starting events. We had our annual wellness speaker last week with Paula Shule visiting us for two assemblies. His motivational presentation was very well received by everybody. He had a really great message. We were able to share the pasta with his few with likes. He did one assembly there in the morning and then two assemblies here later on. And just wanted to say many thanks to the district wellness community for the work and spending that up, and to the town of Lee for covering much of our cost to the community and helping these. Annie mentioned field trip coming up for juniors to sign up to UNAS and Rusty. That's part of kind of a comprehensive college planning season for juniors. They kicked off really last night with a college planning workshop here in the library for families of juniors. So we have the UNAS Rusty old chip going, I assume. We're also planning a trip for that stick as well, so it depends what it takes, there's different post-secondary options. As we meet here tonight, the Italy travelers are right down the hallway for their final meeting before they leave next. Changed a little at the last minute. So we hope they have a great time exploring Rome, Florence, and the world. Annie mentioned the career fair that'll be held next Thursday. We have over fifty community and business representatives coming. That is the biggest career fair we've ever had here. It'll be a great experience. All grades will have opportunities to improve. Juniors take the next step further. Again, as part of their post-secondary plan and everything, they actually participate in mock interviews at the, with some of the community and business reps. We have a group of students at the high school who are very interested in taking and starting a high school level robotics. They've got a good core group of students. They've found a couple of faculty members who would probably could be advisors. They have reached out to the Lennox Club because they have quite a facility over there dedicated just to robotics and the Lennox Club. And the Lennox Club has said, absolutely, come over, you can share our um, our lab. Uh, as you, if you're able to pull this off. So we're going to work on, you know, getting a trial run of a high school robotics. Up going next year. It's a, it'll be a great opportunity for kids. Um, as you know, there are a couple of different options when you're in a high school role for which robots. And which competitions, there's smaller ones and then big ones and. First versus uh, first robotics versus flex robotics, a whole bunch of different options that they're researching. They're really dedicated. Um, and you know, looking more about that. And lastly, um, I wanted to update you on the vent detectors which are in and waiting to be installed and we hope to begin that installation.
All right, next up, special education Ben Morton.
Um, for special education, we are going to be hosting all of the summer positions. We've done some full staff. Um, I believe people will be able to fill at least ninety percent of positions from within. Um, we, we have a very extensive special education program in both buildings. In this building, it's a little bit less. But we've been able to join um, Mr. Mertnuck's programming up the hill. So we have many of our students who are here for services are here four days a week. For at least four, four weeks. Some of them are here for five. Um, so it's been a really nice addition that we were able to add some days for all of our students and uh, including special. We also are, just a reminder, preschool screenings are April twenty fifth, twenty sixth, and seventh. So if you have children that are three, four, or five. Please call my office and we will get you set up for an appointment. And.
Uh, Jordan indicated that he's got some childcare issues that are preventing him from being here, but I will get you a written report from him uh, tomorrow.
Completely understandable, Jordan, we get it. All right, uh, next up, we have committee report. First one is our finance committee.
Earlier this week, we had our finance subcommittee and we went over um, a couple of warrants. So the first warrant that we went over is the accounts payable, um, a total of four hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy four dollars and sixty one cents. Uh, as you can see on the screen here, the descriptions uh, are self-explanatory. Uh, everything aligns with the budget, so there's no, um, no unusual payments here in the account payable.
And if I could, just to remind you to the committee that this is two months worth of accounts payables because we didn't meet uh, last month. So. Um, so that the top one would have been your March uh, uh, warrant and your bottom one would be your April warrant.
All right.
Motion to accept accounts payable for a lot, four hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy four dollars and sixty one cents.
Any discussion? Brendan, can you do a roll call for us, please?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Larmen? Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
In the uh, same with payroll, we have the, the two months as well. Um, first month, five, five hundred and thirty two thousand, nine hundred and thirty seven dollars and fourteen cents. And then um, the month of March, um, we're looking at five hundred and thirty five thousand, four hundred and eighty four dollars and thirty two cents for a total. Payroll for two months of one million, sixty eight thousand, four hundred and twenty one dollars and forty seven cents.
I will add an emotion for the payroll.
I mean, what's the payment pool in the amount of one million, sixty eight thousand, four hundred and twenty one dollars and forty seven cents?
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us again?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Next up, we have old business and we need to vote on our F Y twenty four budget that was presented by. This evening.
I'll make a motion to approve a budget of twelve billion, eighty nine thousand, five hundred and seventy seven dollars to be offset by a total of up to. One million, four hundred and forty two thousand, ninety nine dollars, made up by up to eight hundred and sixteen thousand in school choice. Up to ninety thousand in circuit breaker and up to five hundred and thirty six thousand, ninety nine dollars in grants.
Give me a second.
A second.
Any discussion? Brendan, can you roll call us again, please?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And Larmen? Yes. Yes. All right, next thing on our old business is our last day of school. Uh, well, it might take us.
Thank you. So uh, when the, uh, when the school year twenty two, twenty three calendar was approved. Uh, we did so without the last day of school being a half day. Historically, we have had that a half day for students and for staff. And so I'm here uh, to ask you to amend uh, the school calendar for this year to reflect uh, such a change. Uh, so that we can notify parents uh, and families accordingly. We will meet our time on learning hours. Uh, so that is not a concern. Uh, if you were to accept this proposed modification. So the last day of school. Would be Thursday, June fifteenth. I don't expect. Any, I don't know what this is made of, but I'll pretend it's what, I don't expect any uh, additional uh, weather uh, changes. So I, I expect our last day will remain Thursday, the fifteenth. Just asking for that to be a half day for students and staff.
All right, I will uh, entertain a motion to amend the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three calendar to make the last day of school a half day for. Any discussion? Was that just like a missed moment?
Yep.
Any further discussion? Brenda, can we have a roll call?
Sir Robin?
Yes.
Mister Kenneth?
Yes.
This is Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes. We have no new business. Uh, the next thing on our agenda is our future business. Our next school committee meeting is May ninth, twenty twenty three. Um, and our last thing on the agenda. Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us out, please?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. All right, we are adjourned at seven seventeen.